Day of the sixth regular session of the 21st Congress will now come to order. May we all power it for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, roll call.
Senator Aridos.
Yes.
Senator Christian. Senator Figuerre.
Yes.
Senator Golan. Floor Leader Harper.
Amen.
Senator Gonman.
Morning.
Vice Speaker Moses. Senator Ned. Senator Baluk.
Yes.
Senator Furman. Sen- Senator Romalo. Senator Urusmal.
Amen.
Senator Wali.
Yes.
Speaker Semena.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, twelve members are present.
We do have a quorum to transact business today. Floor Leader, reading of the journal.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning to you, all our members, staff, and all those who are observing our sessions, online or in all our own localities. I move that we dispense with the reading of the journal.
Chair.
It has been moved and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the journal. Those in favor say aye. Abos may. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Presidential Communications, we do not have any communication communications under the said item, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Item six, some Supreme Court communications, none also. Item seven, member communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item eight, departmental communications, none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none. Item ten, state communications, none also, Mr. Speaker. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, none. And item thirteen, foreign government communications, none, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we're now on our order of the day. Item fourteen, standing committee reports, do we have any, Chief Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, for item fourteen, we have understanding, understanding reports. We have an awaiting list number twenty-one dash forty-six for standing committee reports awaiting the twenty-four hours requirement.
Okay, short reasons, subject to call of the chair. These are the JNC reports.
Uh, this, uh, there's only, for now, there's only one report on the awaiting list. That's from the TNC Committee on the OAE supplemental request.
These already, uh, finished the awaiting period? We're now ready to work on it, or is it under the awaiting period?
Under the awaiting, uh, period.
So we'll wait, maybe Chairman will join us tomorrow, we can do it. Any problem, you'll see before we pass the supplemental, the amount that's requested is in here.
Uh, no, as was mentioned yesterday.
So we will leave it as it is. Okay. Congress is back in session, there are awaitings, please read through the reports before we take them up tomorrow. Okay, next item, Chief Clerk.
Item fifteen, special committee reports, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item sixteen, for assignment of measures and communications, kindly refer to referral sheet number twenty-one dash one-twenty-seven.
All right, Chairman and members, the committees, review that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business. We have one bill that is under the said item, and that's CP number twenty-one dash three-five-three for second and final reading. Uh, CP number twenty-one dash three-five-three is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty dash one-seventy-eight, as amended by Public Laws numbers twenty-one dash oh-one, one-one dash oh-seven, twenty-one dash thirty-six, twenty-one dash fifty-three, twenty-one dash fifty-six, twenty-one dash one-oh-two, twenty-one dash one-one-five, twenty-one dash one-thirty-seven, twenty-one dash one-sixty-five, twenty-one dash one-seventy-eight, twenty-one dash two-hundred, and twenty-one dash two-one-eight by amending sections four and six thereof to change the use and allotia funds previously appropriated therein to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Bunbei State and for other purposes.
Short reasons, subject to call of the chair.
This is of the bill on second and final reading.
Chair.
Sure.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress passes on second and final reading, CP number twenty-one dash three-five-three. Discussion. Chairman, on it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have a floor amendment that I wish to overdo the said bill. It's already been linked and on boardable, I move for its adoption.
Sure.
It has been moved and seconded that the offer for amendment to CP twenty-one dash three-five-three by Senator Wally be adopted. Uh, we will dispense with its reading at this point. Floor Leader Harper, motion to suspend.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Move to suspend any relevant rule that may impede our action on the said bill, particularly the rule that requires or prohibit substantive amendment on second reading.
Sure.
It has been moved and seconded that the relevant rules, specifically the rules prohibiting substantive amendments on second and final readings be suspended. Those in favor say aye. Abos may. Motion carried, the relevant rules are now suspended. Discussion on the offer for amendment by Senator Wally. Any discussion? Question, if none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote in favor of adoption of the offer for amendment by Senator Wally, say aye. Abos may.
Aye.
Motion carried. The offer for amendments by Senator Wally are adopted, we now have CD one. Any further discussion, Senator Ned?
Thank you, Speaker, I have a written and oral floor amendment. May I ask the Chief Clerk to read into the record the written amendment?
Short reasons, subject to call of the chair. Back in session. There is an offer for amendment to CP twenty-one dash three-five-three, CD one, by Chairman Ned. It is rather short, so, and the relevant rules are still suspended up to this point. Chief Clerk, read the offered amendments into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We have a floor amendment to CP number twenty-one dash three-five-three, CD one, offered by Senator DeAngie Ned. Item one, page eight, line eighteen to line twenty, delete the following. The allotia funds appropriated under subsection four-three-V. This act shall be the mayor of Colonia Town Government or his designee.
Okay, motion for adoption, Chairman Ned.
So move for the adoption of the said amendment.
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded that the offered for amendment to CP twenty-one dash three-five-three, CD one, by Senator Ned be adopted. Discussion. Discussion. If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. Let's vote those in favor of its adoption, say aye. Abos may. Motion carried. So the floor amendment to CP number twenty-one dash three-five-three, CD one, offered by Senator Ned is adopted, we now have CD two. Any further discussion on CD two? Discussion. If none.
I have.
There's no.
I have oral amendment to offer, Speaker.
Oh, okay. Proceed, Chairman Ned.
Thank you, Speaker. Line fifteen, delete the Poonushulap Kitam and insert So Kuro Metro Road paving in Ludero. Line twenty-five, delete Peace Community Flatbed and insert Nakup Metro Road in Ludero.
Sure.
Chair. It's been moved and seconded that the offered oral amendments by Senator Ned to the CD two be adopted. Okay, the relevant rules are still suspended, so discussion on the offered oral amendments.
Speaker.
Yes, Floor Leader Harper.
Thank you, Speaker. Out of curiosity, I want to ask whether the canceled flatbed is for peace for Ned's constituents or for my constituents?
For your constituents, that's why I'm canceling it.
I think it's for poor.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion? If none, there is no objection, discussion is closed. So we'll vote those in favor of adoption of the offered oral amendments to CP twenty-one dash three-five-three, CD two, offered by Senator Ned, say aye. Abos may. Motion carried, the offered oral amendments are adopted, we now have CD three. Any further discussion on CD three? Discussion, if none, there is no objection. Discussion is now closed, so we'll vote, final call of delegations. Chief Clerk.
For the State of Chuk, Chairman Aridos.
Yes.
State of Bunbei, Chairman Furman. State of Kosai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusmal.
I have yield the floor to Chairman Figuerre.
Chairman Figuerre.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for.
Our reason, CP number twenty-one dash three-five-three, CD three, has passed Congress on second and final reading. Okay, next unfinished business?
None, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Next move down to the bill calendar, next item. Eighteen, first bill.
The first bill under the bill calendar is CP number twenty-one dash two-six-seven for second and final reading. CP number twenty-one dash two-six-seven is a bill for an act to amend the title, amend Title Nineteen of the Code of the Federated States of Marginesia annotated by amending section six-one-three thereof for the purpose of providing seamen on national vessels a non-taxable ten dollar a day at sea benefit and for other purposes.
Hey, Vice Chairman, Christian.
Mr. Speaker, based on practice, due to the absence of the chairman of the committee, I move that we defer action until the chairman returns.
Sure.
Short reasons, subject to call of the chair. Question saying that you move to defer, and I will accept. Congress is back in session, just restate your motion, Senator Christian.
Mr. Speaker, all our seamen who are traveling in the ocean have sometimes met some difficulties, and so this bill, this amendment was introduced so that they may be able to receive some additional compensation over and above their salaries and wages. Uh, and for that purpose, the bill was introduced and an amendment had been offered. And because of my conviction that the chairman must be here in order to move it, I so moved that the amendment be deferred to tomorrow's calendar.
Sure.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that CP twenty-one dash two-sixty-seven be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, CP number twenty-one dash two-sixty-seven is deferred to tomorrow's session. Okay, next bill, Chief Clerk.
The next bill under the bill calendar is CP number twenty-one dash three-four-six for second and final reading. CP number twenty-one dash three-four-six is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number eighteen dash seventeen, as amended by Public Laws numbers eighteen dash ninety-eight, eighteen dash one-one-two, eighteen dash one-twenty-two, nineteen dash oh-seven, nineteen dash twenty-four, nineteen dash forty-one, nineteen dash fifty-two, nineteen dash seventy-three, nineteen dash eighty-two, nineteen dash one-oh-one, nineteen dash one-one-four, nineteen dash one-three-nine, twenty dash oh-seven, twenty dash sixteen, twenty dash thirty-six, twenty dash fifty-two, twenty dash eighty-four, twenty-one dash fifteen, twenty, one-one dash one-one-three, twenty-one dash one-two-three, twenty-one dash one-seventy-five, twenty-one dash one-ninety-two, and twenty-one dash two-oh-eight by amending section two thereof to change the use of certain funds previously appropriated therein for the purpose of funding public projects and social programs for the people of Yap State and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Thank you, Speaker, I move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Sure.
It has been moved and seconded that Congress passes on second and final reading, CP number twenty-one dash three-four-six. Discussion. Any discussion? You have anything to say, Chairman Urusmal? That's your project.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I, uh, was fortunate to have had the chance to be updated by Chairman Figuerre on things that have gone on before my return today, and one of which is this item here. And, uh, I fully endorse it, support it, and ask Congress to pass it on second and final reading. Thank you.
Question.
Okay, any further discussion, questions we call for? There is no objection. Discussion is closed. So we're vote by roll call of members, I mean delegations. Chief Clerk.
For the State of Chuk, Chairman Aridos.
Yes.
State of Bunbei, Chairman Furman.
Amen.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusmal.
I again defer to Chief, to Chairman Figuerre to cast Yap's vote.
Chairman Figuerre.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill.
Bill has passed the Congress on second and final reading, that's bill twenty-one dash three-four-six. Next bill.
The next bill is CP number twenty-one dash three-four-seven for second and final reading. CP number twenty-one dash three-four-seven is a bill for an act to amend section one-one-seven of Title Fifty-two of the Code of the Federated States of Marginesia annotated as amended by Public Law Number twenty dash one-five-two to exempt all attorneys classified as staff attorney for from the Public Service System Act and for other purposes.
Hey, uh, Vice Chairman, uh, Christian, you're Vice Chairman of JNCO, right?
That's true, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker, again, I move to defer action on this bill to tomorrow's calendar.
Sure.
And seconded that said bill be deferred to tomorrow's session. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Abos may. Motion carried, CP number twenty-one dash three-four-seven is deferred to tomorrow's calendar. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
The next bill under the bill calendar is CP number twenty-one dash three-fifty for second and final reading. CP number twenty-one dash three-fifty is a bill for an act to appropriate the sum of two, two million eight hundred thousand dollars from the General Fund of the Federated States of Marginesia for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one for the purpose of funding priority infrastructure projects and other public projects and social programs for the people of Yap, Kosai, Bunbei, and Chuk States and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre.
Move to defer action on the bill to tomorrow's calendar.
Aye. Sure.
Short reasons, subject to call of the chair. So let's go back. Speaker. Congress is back in session, there is a motion to defer said bill to tomorrow's session, which was seconded. So those in favor of that motion say aye. Abos may. Motion carried, CP number twenty-one dash three-fifty, CD, I mean, three-fifty is deferred to tomorrow's session. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
The next bill under the bill calendar is CP number twenty-one dash three-five-six for second and final reading. CP number twenty-one dash three-five-six for second and final reading. CB number twenty-one dash three five six is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law Number twenty dash thirty-one, as amended by Public Law's numbers twenty dash forty-one, twenty dash fifty-one, twenty dash seventy-seven, twenty dash one-one-three, twenty-one dash twenty-four, twenty-one dash forty-five, twenty-one dash eighty-three, twenty-one dash one-oh-one, twenty-one dash one-thirty-three, and twenty-one dash two-oh-four by amending section five thereof to change the use of funds previously appropriated therin to fund public projects and social programs for the people of Chuk state and for other purposes.
Okay, Chairman Figuerre?
Move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
Chairman?
It has been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty-one dash three fifty-six. Any discussion? Discussion on the bill? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's vote by roll call of delegations for a second reading. Chief Clerk?
For the State of Chuk, Chairman Aridos.
Yes.
State of Bunbei, Chairman Perman.
Aye, my.
State of Kosai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusmal.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker, all four states voted for the said bill.
CB number twenty-one dash three fifty-six has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill, Chief Clerk?
The next bill is CB number twenty-one dash three five eight for second and final reading. CB number twenty-one dash three five eight is a bill for an act to amend section one-six-three of Title fifty-two of the Code of the Federated States of Magnesia annotated, as amended to set a minimum and raise the limit on the professional premium to specify who determines the amount of professional premium and for other purposes.
Hey, Vice Chairman Christian?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wasn't paying attention. Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair.
I'll make the
So come back. Congress is back in session. Vice Chairman Christian?
Uh, I so move for passage of the bill on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress passed on second and final reading, CB number twenty-one dash three fifty-eight. Discussion? Any discussion? If none, there is no objection.
Speaker?
Uh, Florida Harper?
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, just out of curiosity, uh, why do we decide to set one-hundred-fifty as the max for the, uh, uh, premium?
I believe, uh, based on our, uh, the staff's calculation, that would take them up to at least the same level as where some of the other attorneys are right now, or we feel it's, uh, safer. It's about ten, uh, uh, increase. So that gives them at least from forty to fifty. I think that was the explanation.
Okay.
Further discussion? Uh, Chairman Worsomal?
I thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Let's go back. Congress is back in session, uh, we're still discussing the bill.
Question.
Question? Questions been called for, if there is no objection, discussion is closed. So let's fold by roll call of, uh, delegations, Chief Perk.
For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aritos.
Yes.
State of Bombay, Chairman Perman.
Bombay said yes.
State, State of Koshai, Chairman Wali.
No. No.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusmal.
Thank you, Chief Clark, I, um, uh, would like the Chairman of Ways and Means, Chairman Figueroa, to cast the vote for Yap.
Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, three states voted for, one against.
For addition, CB number 21-358 has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill. Next bill, Chief Perk.
The, the next bill is, uh, CB number 21-359 for second and final reading. CB number 21-359 is a bill for an act to amend sections 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 12 of public law number 21-185 as amended by public law number 21-210 to appropriate 7,648,555 dollars of additional funds from the General Fund of the Federated States of Marginesia for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2021, to provide supplemental funding for the operations of the national government, agencies, boards, authorities, and commissions, National Election Commission, grants, subsidies, and contributions, capital and human resources development to raise the employment ceiling, to change the allotment of certain funds and for other purposes.
Chairman Figueroa.
I move for the passage of the bill on second and final reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CB number 21-359. Discussion?
Speaker.
And it's been, uh, Florida Harbor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, uh... You know, before I do what, uh, I'm planning to do, uh, I would like to first of all, you know, express my apology to all honorable members if I may be perceived as a very rude, arrogant, stubborn, and crazy, uh, individual. But I'm not. It is only out of my compassion and sympathy to a citizen of ours who had been really doing a great service to our nation for about 30 years and who has been, uh, promised or committed by one of our departments to be hired. And for some reason, they always fail to, uh, submit the amount of, uh, figure that need to, uh, be appropriated in order for this individual to be hired by the department. And so, Mrs. Speaker, I would like to offer an oral amendment to the bill, uh, and I hope our staff will, you know, clean it and polish it where it should be. Uh, Mrs. Speaker, I therefore move that, uh, 80,000 should be added, uh, to the figure in the title, in the, uh, section 1, and wherever it would be needed to add that, uh, figure, 80,000. And especially also in the Department of Foreign Affairs, where the person is supposed to be, uh, hired, but, uh, they failed to, uh, submit the, uh, request to Congress. I move, uh, for the passage of the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Is it seconded?
Seconded.
Senator Coleman.
It's been moved and seconded that, uh, the offered amendment by, uh, uh, Florida Harbor, which I think it's a contractual amount that should go into the Department of Foreign Affairs' contractual services, uh, this amendment or amendment be adopted. Uh, discussion on the offered, uh, oral amendments. Any discussion? If none, there is no objection. Discussion is closed. So let's fold, those in favor of adoption of the offered oral amendment by, uh, Florida Harbor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, the offered amendment or amendments are adopted, we now have CT 1.
Mrs. Speaker, would you like to ask for the no votes?
Well, we already voted, I only, uh, heard some say yes, aye, and I didn't hear any, uh...
I, I was waiting for you to ask for the no votes.
Yes, I did. I did say, those in any favor? Okay, so any, uh, other discussion on CT 1? Any other discussion?
Move for the previous question.
There is a motion for previous question, if there is no objection, discussion is closed, so let's fold by roll call of, uh, delegations. Chief Perk.
For the state of Chuk, Chairman Aritos.
Yes.
State of Bombay, Chairman Perman.
For the supplement, yes.
State of Koshai, Chairman Wali.
Yes.
State of Yap, Chairman Urusmal.
Again, I, uh, defer to Chairman Figueroa to cast the Yap vote.
Chairman Figueroa.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, all four, four states voted for the said bill.
CB number 21-359, CD 1, has passed Congress on second and final reading, next bill.
There are no more, no more bills, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, short recess.
Go back. Congress is back in session, if there is no objection, uh, we will, uh, move back to item 14 under our order of the date. Uh, okay, Chief Perk. We're now under our order of date.
For item 14, standing committee reports, we have, hmm, we have more reports awaiting that 24 hours requirement.
Okay, so, members, uh, see the waiting list, 21-46, uh, more reports are under it. So, who you're reading for tonight? Okay, if there's, uh, nothing more on item 14, uh, we will now go back down to item 19, resolution calendar.
Speaker.
Who's that? Florida Harbor.
Speaker, if I may not be out of order, I move that we stand in recess until 10:00 AM tomorrow, uh, Speaker's time.
Seconded.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded that Congress has stand in recess until, uh, tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, uh, Chuk time. Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion made, motion carried, Congress now stands in recess until tomorrow at 10:00 in the morning, uh, Chuk time.